Board of Selectmen's meeting for Wednesday, June 20, 2018. And rise and say the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Sue is not going to be present tonight, and so it's up to you and me, Bob. We'll take it from there. And I'm going to start with making a motion to approve the agenda as written. You have a second on that?
Second.
All in favor?
I don't think I want to make any changes, so yes, I'm in favor.
I'm sorry. Any changes, amendments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we've got one set of minutes to approve, and I'm going to make a motion to approve the minutes to the regular meeting, June 6, 2018, as written. Any amendments?
No.
All in favor?
I'll second that, and then...
You'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's from the discussion section. And the first selectmen's report. Eagle Environmental down at the property down by the bridge, and they're conducting their Phase 3 right now. Talked to Ron about that. He thought it would be a couple of weeks before it was wrapped up, so we'll see how that's going to turn out. Connecticut Landmarks had a meeting down at the Grange. To be honest, very poorly announced, and that's an understatement. Those of us who became aware of it on the day that it was happening attended, and it was very interesting. They -- it's a little hard to tell just what's going on, if they've been stirred up because of Dave Collins' articles, they're finally moving, or if something else is getting them going. They indicate they're going to be rebuilding the barns starting mid-July, and the idea is fully disassemble the barns, decide which pieces are salvageable, replicate those that are not, and then reassemble the barn in its original configuration with a cost of about $500,000. And I'm a little curious to see just how much that barn they can salvage. I would have thought you could buy a reproduction barn for a whole lot less than $500,000, and I get a feeling it's going to be mostly reproduction. I've taken one or two of those apart, and I don't think there's much there to salvage. And our Johnsonville friends, the Church of Christ, held a poverty walk there last May, I believe on the 5th, and they had about 2,000 people show up for it. And it was truly an interesting proposition. We had to close down Lee'sville Road there, and they closed down Johnsonville and the portion of Neptune that extends down below, and actually had quite an event going. Well, they've come back, and they've announced that they're going to do it again. This time, we're not going to have to close down Lee'sville, and they're predicting somewhere between 2,500 and 3,000 people to arrive. And they're a little uncertain about the dates. They're talking possibly sometime in August, possibly sometime in September. It's a question of when the very high officials, who apparently intend to attend that, are going to be available. So they've started making their plans early, wanted to make us aware of them, get our police department involved with it, but we can look forward to that happening again. And it's quite remarkable, the sheer number of buses they bring people in on at that point. We talked to them, and it sounds like they've got everything under control, they did last time, and I expect it will be a similar operation. But here we go again. East Hattam Free Public Library. The Attorney General approved that quite some time ago. We finally got the Reading Room Association to forward the petition that was required to turn the building over to us, to the probate court. Probate court took a look at it and came to the conclusion that they had no jurisdiction, kicked it back to the lawyers. Rob, Rich Roberts, our lawyer, and Scott Jessick went back to the Attorney General's office, looked at it, and came to the conclusion again that, well, yeah, they really did have jurisdiction over it. And so it's back in the lawyer's hands, and hopefully going to go forward again with the probate court. But once like running a malasse with this, it's taking forever. And lastly, the Bone Mill Project. That's well underway. It's anticipated that within the next month or so, we're going to perhaps have a bridge again. It's a construction that, once they put it together, they just bring it in, crop it in place, have to complete the approaches, and then we have a bridge. So it's something to look forward to. It's going to make getting into Bone Mill Road a whole lot easier than it's been for a long time. And going back to responses for previous meetings, I had hoped to have Beth here tonight. She emailed me, texted me about an hour ago, saying she wasn't going to be able to make it, so I'm going to have to kind of fill in for her as best I can. Dead and dying trees alongside of the road. I talked to her about it. She's been to some presentations about what's going on in Connecticut, particularly the ashes, but the oaks that were killed by the gypsy moths as well. And what she was told at that point, and repeated to me, was that there is no town that can afford what they're up against. Just as simple as that. It's going to be mind-boggling. I talked to Steve Hedler about it. Steve is of the opinion that it's perhaps a million-dollar project for us, and his thought is to take the worst roads, worst roads we're working on, Hungerford Road in particular, coming up this summer, and do perhaps 13 miles of road a year, and try to stay ahead of it that way. And his estimation is the million dollars. That really doesn't answer the problem elsewhere, and you're going to have to do some assessment of risk, decide where you really have to work at it, where you really have to get ahead of this first. And talking to Beth, one of her suggestions, she said perhaps, given the scope of the work that has to be done, we should look into getting a bucket and perhaps putting on a little more staff and undertaking to do it ourselves. It might be a little more cost-effective. At the moment, she's absolutely overwhelmed. We've still got nor'easter rush, she thought maybe 30 miles of road that we need to clear. We haven't actually started the mowing yet, and we've got the sweeping we've got to do. So we are behind schedule on everything ourselves, as it stands. And now with the trees on top of that, we've got a major problem. That's something that we're going to have to talk to the Board of Finance about, and we're going to have to look at next year's budget and see what room we have on this year's budget. But pretty bleak outlook on the trees there. Any thoughts?
Well, one, you know, we have $450,000 set aside for doing Petticoat, which does need some work, but maybe it'd be more effective to chip-seal it at this time, skin patch where it's needed and chip-seal it and save some money, and utilize that for some other -- some of the other costs coming down the road.
You know, I put that off a year ago to save money for the budget, and it became an important part of getting a budget through last year. Beth is adamant that it has to be done. It's something we can talk to her about. It's a matter of interest.
I think we have to look at every option out there for...
We've got a big problem. And the thing is, you can't really turn to the state and hope that they're going to jump in and help. They've got more than enough problems of their own, and every single town in Connecticut is going to be faced with the same thing. I've heard that there's portions of Connecticut that have the gypsy moths still there.
Yeah, they're not in the same numbers, but yeah.
Not in that level of numbers, but over a year or two, they might come back.
Yeah, the problem we had here, and why they -- there was so much white oak damage is because we'd had the drought for two years ahead of time, and of course during the last infestation. That's what caused all the problems, so... I mean, most of the trees I counted when I went around were actually white oak, so the ashes are going to be dying, but most of the ones I was looking at were white oak.
But red oaks seem to do better.
Red oaks do do better, yeah.
I'm not good enough to know the difference between one oak to the other. Wow. That's a shame. Anyway, that's not real good. I think Beth would have had a little more information perhaps than I have, but there And just looking at some of the other questions. Todd had asked about the Circuit Rider, whether or not we were reaching out, and we have done that. I don't know how long it's going to take to get him in here, to give us a hand looking at all the signage. And there were some questions on Hungerford. Crary was very interested in something for calming the traffic, and it's his opinion we should leave Petticoat alone because that tended to calm the traffic. I'm not sure that's enough reason for it, but the Circuit Rider could also look at that. Talking to Beth about it, she said really the only thing you can do is have police patrol and have some time-to-time police protection there, people checking for speeders, looking to see what's going on, trying to get that under control. And Crary's in a very difficult spot. They come up Hungerford, and if they're going out mill, there's that nice, easy corner there, which people go through very fast, and likewise coming back down again. Then if they're going straight up Petticoat, that's just a clean shot. So I can understand his unhappiness about that.
I suspect some of the activity, additional traffic, and maybe the speed is people trying to bypass the bridge constructions.
You know, I thought that, but if you take Petticoat, it's going to take you twice as long as if you're waiting for the lights.
True, but that may be why they're traveling so fast, so, yeah.
I'm right smack dab in the middle of it. And it's hard to imagine anybody would think that that was a quicker route. Maybe it's just a little more exciting. I don't know. There's also a question about BB Road with speed signs. The signs on that are ours. Talked to Beth about that. However, on the yellow signs in a couple of locations in town, the state has put up, I think on very abrupt corners, a speed limit, 20 miles per hour, from what I understand. I think that's what they may have seen down there.
Probably. I mean, it was on the original prints where those would be going that we had for all the curves.
And... But I hadn't realized that there were speed signs as well as the yellow signs. And... Okay. Yeah, that covers that. Takes me a minute to find things here. I'm in the process of getting new glasses, so you have to bear with me. The eyes aren't quite what they were two or three years ago. Anyway, I have one item, and I don't see it now. Where did that go? Get it out of order? Oh, well. This is Rob's letter there that I wanted to...
That was the dead trees.
I'm sorry? Please, that?
This letter about the dead trees?
No, about the Reddicker, probably.
Yeah, the Reddicker letter, anyway.
Yeah, that's under...
Unfinished business?
Yeah, that, yes. Right. East Hattam Village Revitalization Business.
Oh, that comes down later, I'm sorry. Anyway, just to bring you a little bit up to speed, the Horizontal Curve Safety Project. Haven't heard anything or seen anything on that for a while.
We skipped public comment. Citizens' concerns.
There we go. I do need those glasses. Citizens' concerns, I'm sorry. Bob?
Yeah. I came to the last meeting, by the time of the meeting, realized I was a bit disappointed that you hadn't taken any actions yet with regard to the transfer station report that we did. At the end of the meeting, there was a discussion of the ordinance as being a reason for your inability, your ability to not do anything, that you needed to rest at the ordinance before you were to be able to move forward. So I've got a copy of the ordinance, reviewed the ordinance. I thought that in the previous discussion, you said that you reviewed all the ordinances and have done an upgrade or an updating of all the ordinances.
No.
And it did not happen.
No.
Well, I did review the ordinance, and it certainly does say that Carter's are allowed to transfer station. But let me ask a different question first. Does the Board of Selectmen, as a totality of the three of you, do you have a fiduciary responsibility to the people of the town?
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
Well, fiduciary responsibility is a financial responsibility to take care of the funds of the town. The specific term, I mean, you might want to look at it. It's not an unusual. Do you have to look at -- don't you look out for the funds of East Hattam, the way you spend money?
As a Board of Finance, ultimately, yes.
Well, I think it's their job to come up with a budget that you subsequently approved. I bring up the fiduciary responsibility part of it because I think that it is important. When I wrote this document along with my colleagues, we identified a number of areas where you'd be able to save considerable amounts of money. Last time I used the term, I wrote you a roadmap, and it had a number of different things on it. Transportation, you bought a truck. But there were two other items on there that were large, major items. One of them had to do with the amount of funds that were spent because Carter's go and dump their garbage at our transfer station. And the other area that was large was the abuse of the bulky waste. So I have a couple of suggestions and asks that you take a careful look at. With regard to bulky waste, I'm aware that Beth keeps excellent records, this is where I got all my truck money, these records from. And it would be quite easy to do an audit, so you know on whatever time the three of you decide, whether that be a weekly basis, a monthly basis, every two weeks. Currently, you have Willamantic Waste picking up and weighing the bulky waste. You know how much you're paying. You should also know how much you're receiving in terms of revenue. One of the items that I showed you was that you're only collecting about 21% of the funds that you should be. That is not correct. It's very easy to do an audit, very, very easy, and it shouldn't be something that's just not done. The second part of it has to do with your power as the Board of Selectmen. In your -- the first -- you may want to take a look at it. I asked you whether you had taken a look at it, but there are some things in here that are not consistent with the way you're currently operating, and I have to take responsibility because I probably should have read this document when I -- during the time that I chaired the committee. It says that the Board of Selectmen should be going to be charging on a cumulative basis, okay? So that, if you're going to update that, that's in Section 279-7, and it talks, it deals with demolition materials and how that's handled. And we currently charge on a pound basis, and here it says inside the report that it's supposed to... Rob, I did meet with you at a Jack Clark event, and I think I might have mentioned that too. Probably the most important part of it is it's under Rules and Regulations: Determination of Fees. This is the area that gives you the right to charge for the waste that goes into this transfer station. And in fact, not only does it give you the right to go and do that, that's under 279-10, but it also tells you how much you can charge. It says, "The Board of Selectmen is authorized to adopt reasonable rules and regulations to put this article into effect. Such regulations shall be in writing, shall be effective upon publication in a newspaper having general circulation in the town of East Hampton." East -- sorry. I used to live there.
I would say, you've got to get off the island. You've got to get off the island.
I've only been here a year. B, the Board of Selectmen is authorized to determine the amount of fee for each assessed material based on actual disposal cost for the town of East Hampton. So the point here is that there's more than one way to speak that. When we wrote the report, we asked that all those things, there were six items, that they be accepted as a group. And it's pretty clear that you've decided that you're not going to be able to do that. I'm aware of some of the more difficult issues, and I understand that you may choose a bag plan or not a bag plan or a hybrid plan, and that certainly, that's up to you. I understand. There's some controversy over that. But I do not believe that it's necessary for you to... Having said that, I want you to understand that you have the right to charge. We are now, excuse me, as of June 30, we will now be the only town in the state of Connecticut that allows Carter's to come in here. And while it's true that the ordinance says that that's allowable, it does not... I go back now to this whole area of financial responsibility, all right? You have the right to charge. Let them come in, but you now have the right, and only you do, only the Selectmen, says it right here in your ordinance, to do that. That's a rather harsh statement, and I know it is. But I researched this. I went and called, and I understand that in the last two years, in the last 10 years, you've had two reports, and they asked for similar things. Because of the outcry of the public, you decided to do nothing. Like I mentioned last time, taking on this responsibility, I said to my wife, I read the one thing I fear the most is that they'll write a report and they'll do exactly what they did over the last 10 years. They'll do nothing. But I'll write a big report. Now, I wrote a different report that was based on numbers. So what I'm saying here is that if you have... I studied this area, and I know that the two major Carter's here charge $87 per quarter, excuse me, $81 per quarter. And the rate that's charged by Willamantic Waste in Colchester, my son lives there, is $87. So we get a $6 rate. So when I called up Willamantic, I immediately said, "That's a lot of money, $87." "Well, that's for a 95-gallon trash bin. For a small family, two to four people, you could get a 65-gallon one." "Oh, really? How much is that?" "$78. Oh." I suggest to you that this idea that our residents have been given a lower price is simply not true. And I did the research, you can check it out yourself. I've spoke to the owner of Willamantic about it, and while he has no interest in ruining the lives of two small local companies, I just wanted to find out whether you were being told the truth.
Well, if you would. First of all, that's a regulation that goes to town meeting. We don't just arbitrarily change it. And to change, they have the right, within our ordinance book, to dump there, as they're dumping now.
I'm not questioning that.
And we would have to go to town meeting. You, with your process, negotiate an agreement, and if we were to go to the bag system, they would withdraw from the field.
That's correct. That's what they agreed to.
And we are... That is the goal that we are striving for now. We met with our lawyer this past week, spent several hours with him, going over a number of things that are issues for us, and we need to know how we do it. The bag system was one of those. He's got it under review right now. As you indicate, we can set fees at the transfer station. The bag system may well be a fee, and we have asked him to explore that. He's not the authority. He has another lawyer within his system who is the authority. And they are reviewing that aspect to see if we can set that fee for bags. If we can, we're likely to do it. And that will put the bag system in place, and the rest of this falls in line as you arrange through your commission. The agreement that you came to was that we get the bag system in place, and then they would cooperate with us on this. That's our goal. You're worried about the bulky waste that come up and back. We're looking at that very closely now. Got a map right here. That's the layout of the whole... They have it upside down, but that's it. Little lines on it, thoughts about it. I'll tell you, from my standpoint, what little I know, and I was hoping Beth would be here to help tonight, but she wasn't able to make it. Everything's in the wrong place up there. It would cost a fortune to move it. I've asked about simply making sure everybody goes up and back, has to go through the waste station. I said, "Let's do that." They said, "You're going to have traffic out onto 149 halfway to Muddus. It'll back up that bad." We did. We closed the back of the unit here, the hauler's unit where you dump everything, the municipal solid waste that we pay for. I got panic-stricken calls very fast. The entire system was just jammed. Those vehicles that were coming in that were accustomed to going to the back, suddenly unloading in the front, made it impossible for people to get in there and park. Just hammered the system. I backed off a little, said, "Use your discretion. When it's going to mess up the system, let somebody go back there." I looked at the back of it, trying to understand what we can do to make it safe, and I'm not comfortable with it, and it remains closed. On an occasional basis, when it represents a problem, I've said, "You can break that rule. There's some gray area here. You can't have it all black and white."
If they have the gate up.
They have the gate up, and they're not letting people go back.
If they have the gate up, it's not totally...
And it's working, but it's working because on occasions, I suspect mostly on a Saturday, when the place is absolutely mobbed, it's a problem. All of a sudden, they may have to let somebody who they can trust go back there and get rid of his stuff, just to keep it from being totally locked up. I asked about everybody going through and getting weighed, everybody going over the scale. They said, "Good. We've got three guys down here. Most of the time, they've got two really, because one of them's off or busy elsewhere. One of those guys is going to be in that waste station all day long, doing nothing but..." And we don't have... but, and we don't have excess staff to do that with. And the, and even given that, it's going to back traffic up onto 149 again, particularly on a Saturday. It's going to be a hammer, a real problem for the town. My dilemma, I tend to do this, I've got to find answers to problems like that. And I'm looking at the layout, I'm looking at different traffic patterns, I'm saying, "How do we make this happen?" I've talked to Beth. I said, "What if we put an additional road in that just goes to the scale? And we have everybody directed over onto the scale? And that needs to go up and back? And that allows the other lane to be free for people to come and go on, the other two lanes." That's an interesting, I'm very seriously looking at stickers right now, trying to understand them, talking to Deb about how we put them together. I don't, I normally don't want to answer questions here, I want to bring the answers back. I'm doing it today for you.
I gave a sticker for the hat in East Hampton.
No, no. And one of the things that intrigues me is automatic gates, like you go into a parking lot. You can get stickers, not expensive, which, and there's a sensor that spots the sticker, it's got to be roughly in the right location, and will automatically let you in. I'd love to see a system where if you don't have a sticker, you don't even get in, and with a gate. Now, come Saturday, with the kind of traffic we get, not going to work. We're going to open that gate, we're going to have somebody down there looking at the stickers as they go by. That's, that's the alternative. But what I'm talking about is what we're going through, trying to come to grips with what we have, how we adapt it to what we want, and how we make it work. It involves the engineer, Beth, it involves me, it involves our lawyer, and it doesn't happen overnight. And it's not so simple that three of us can sit here and say, "Oh, I'll make a motion, let's do it." And somebody else makes it happen. We've got to make it happen. And we are in the process as best we can be, and very committed to doing it. But it isn't going to be something that leaves people out on 149, scared to death of the trash whizzing by. Now, I have to think about that. We've got a short road there, we've got two lanes. Think about it, we've put people up and back, they go over the scale to get there, they've got to come back and go back over the scale. Now we've got everybody going over the scale, and all those people that have to come back. You want to talk about gridlock? It's going to be awful. Somehow or other, we have to work that out. These are the problems that we're looking at, trying to solve. And we have a host of problems, which came up with this good report. It's something we can implement. We can implement it, one item at a time, as fast as we can, and make it work, and make it not be inconvenient for people. That's the goals. And to come in here, short term, and say, "Why isn't it all done?", you don't even begin to understand the problems we're confronted with trying to do it. And, and you know what? I don't have a staff of 50 behind me. I've got me, and I've got Beth. That's what we've got to sort it out. And we're working at it. Believe it or not, we've both had full-time jobs ahead of that, and we still do have full-time jobs. It's not that we're not cooperating, it's not that we're not interested, but it isn't going to happen in a heartbeat. And you know what? We met with the lawyer, spent an afternoon with him, talking about this, "How do we make this happen? What are we allowed to do? What do our regulations permit us to do? We need a proper interpretation." So I don't need somebody coming back saying, "Well, that says you can't do that." I want it done when it's done, and I want it right. Fair enough?
Hi, could you make a suggestion?
I'm sorry?
When we were at, I was to take the minutes for the, for the transfer station committee, and someone on board had mentioned having, like, I don't know what they call it, close net weight or something like this for a truck. So they knew how much the truck weighed with the driver, and there might be variation of 50, 100 pounds depending upon who's driving that day. But let's say, let's just say it's 2,000 pounds for that empty truck with a driver. So when they go over the truck just once, over the scale once, you have the weight for that day, and you know what the truck should weigh when it's empty, so they don't have to get weighed coming back out, they would just do the subtraction and get how much trash it weighs.
All well and good when you're working with a fleet, and you know all the trucks that are coming and going. My pickup, the one I buy next week, I mean, and this is 1,000 people in town, with their vehicles, their pickups, their trucks, everyone different, no two quite the same, a constantly changing mix. You're going to have to have the bulk, certainly some could. You know, you could have the haulers come in, they're pre-weighted and all that, few pounds difference for gas, so what? But the vast majority are going to have to come back over the scale.
Now, if you're going to have, like, a sensor reading on the sticker so that it knows to open the gate, could not that sticker, could you not feed it in a computer that each vehicle, as soon as it goes through, you identify what that empty truck weight is, so you don't have to worry about each one? Because every, every vehicle that goes through has to have a sticker. So can't you align the, the empty weight truck with that sticker? You know what I mean? So you go through electronically, and then you know how much it weighs?
Do you weigh every truck that conceivably go through it in town?
Yeah.
I mean, have you, are you good to 1,000 or 2,000 pickups?
When you buy a vehicle, I believe part of the registration, or at least it was in New York, has the gross weight of the vehicle. So you can add on, I don't know, 150 pounds for a driver, and maybe someone weighs 100, maybe, whatever you want, you can just get like an average, so that you can take that along with it. I'm just saying, this way you could go through quickly, and they don't have to get weighed coming back, so you cut the amount of time on the waste station in half. So if you're moving them in quickly, you shouldn't really have the traffic backup, or at least it should be half the backup.
These systems, you know, if we want to put a couple hundred thousand dollars into a computer system to tie everything together.
I don't know what the cost would be, I'm not computer savvy, but sometimes it's not that high.
The gate system is a very simple one. It identifies the sticker, bang, there it is, there's a logo on it of some sort that it sees, and says, "Okay, you can go in, I'll open for you." But now all of a sudden, we're tying it back, and we're knowing the weights, and we're maintaining a system that would cost a fortune to maintain.
We also have a lot of contractors in town, so what an empty vehicle weight that you would purchase wouldn't necessarily be what's going to go through that. Also, we have a lot of painters in town that have ladders attached, they have the big toolboxes, you know, so.
That's true.
It's not going to be.
It's almost unpredictable the tons of weight.
That's true. Yeah.
Or if I stop at Jagbar one week before to get 1,000 pounds worth, worth of pottery blocks.
Well, you have to have some way to figure it out. I mean, tell me later before, how to scale, and everyone went over the scale.
We're not going to sell this.
And I don't know, they, then I guess they got weighed in and out.
You got weighed in, right, you got weighed out.
And they got weighed out. So maybe that's how you do it then.
I mean, and, and we're going to work this out, but it just isn't a simple thing to figure out.
I'm just trying to throw out a suggestion that maybe would save manpower and time, but obviously, the argument that you brought up was a valid argument because it might, but at some point, they have, if they're getting weighed in and out, well, weighed in and out, you would know, because they would still be coming out with 1,000 pounds of cement block. So maybe that's how you have to do it.
I lived in a town where there was 20,000, 20,000 people. We have about 900. And we, we had a station, a, a, same type of station you have, a little bit differently. And the guy would look in your thing, "What do you have?", and if you had something that had to be weighed, you weighed it, all the guys go through, you know, go, go dump the stuff. And then they got weighed, and they turned around, came back, they got reweighed. And as far as the number of people that were, the most I ever saw was three or four. I lived there for 28 years, and I always used the dump. So all I'm saying is, is that you may, you may not see the, this was, this was a town that only had one dump that, that had twice the number of people, and I didn't see that type of thing, so I.
I can't account for that town. I, I do know what I see up there myself, it's busy. But understand, and I'm not, I'm not looking for a solution here, I'm just saying, this is what we're up against.
I appreciate the fact that you, that you're taking this serious. Thank you very much.
But you've got to give us a little time.
I understand.
Todd?
Todd Delston, 50 Volvo Road. Bob's committee did a great job, they pointed out the opportunities for improvement the town has. Unfortunately, the transfer station was designed back in the late 70s, early 70s, late 60s, early 70s, 71, 72, and it was put in. None of this was came to be made by his mind because we were a different town back then. But again, I'll offer a suggestion. I understand your problem with manpower, you've got a lot of details to work out, a lot of infrastructure to think about, and I suggest that you, as I did last week, you form a committee.
I, I'm giving that thought, thought committee.
That's your manpower, that's your, that's your skill base.
But I, I need to know what we're cooking with first, and the lawyer's part of that, and some ideas here, and then we're going to go, we'll see where we go with that. But that is on, that is on my mind.
I frankly don't see you guys doing it by yourselves. And if you do, you're going to hire a lot of paid staff, it's going to be extremely expensive. I think we've got some people in town with expertise that can certainly help out, and then you have to go to consultants. I see civil engineering issues, I see vehicular issues, I see people movement issues, but I think that's what I suggest that you do.
Well, think, think a moment about it this way. The bag system, the lawyer's looking at that, just how do we implement it? If we find that we can implement it, and we're going to do some justification for it, explain to people why, and the haulers agree, you know, live up to their agreement, suddenly our problem changes dramatically.
By 40%.
Yeah, it changes enormously overnight. So let's see where that one takes us right off the top, because that's a very interesting aspect of it.
Again, speaking as a board of finance type member, although I'm not speaking with the board of finance tonight, but I will later on as a board of finance member, but look, you don't need to reinvent the wheel.
Yeah, I don't want to reinvent any wheels.
Because there's bag systems throughout the country, and some good, some bad, we should take lessons from them, and, and learn from them, and apply it here. I think our biggest issue with this transfer station is civil engineering, traffic flow, it's a big deal. Because you drive, that's a big deal. You know what, roads, you know what cars out, 149, going to be a disaster.
That's, that's what this is all about. I look, and, and every time I look at it and I say, "Everything's in the wrong spot. If it were 30 feet more here, if it were 20 more feet there, it'd be so different. I could do this, and I could do that." And I've got Beth looking at it, asked her to do the same thing, and I've got her working on signage as well, ordering up signage for it. And that, to me, is very important, get people aware of what's, what the implications of how you dispose of your material is.
I forgot, I got one other question. Stickers on cars, are we putting stickers on vehicles today at that?
Absolutely. And we are, we have had a sticker system for years. It's been allowed to go more lax than it should have been. It's been made very clear that sticker system is going to be used that we have. I'm sitting, talking with Deb about how do we implement through the town clerk's office, and how works best for her. And we're talking, and we're in discussion right now on that.
But right now, it's voluntary?
I'm sorry?
Right now, it's voluntary getting stickers?
No, no, you're required to have a sticker. And, but they're not enforcing it.
No, I, I volunteered myself, like, two weeks ago, with a sticker. The guy, they're very nice, they put it on the truck for me.
Oh, they're very good about it.
But other people I saw had those stickers, and they were coming and going, so.
Everybody should have stickers.
They've got to get after those.
You're a level playing field for, even fair to the citizens of the East End.
Each time I get up there, I remind them that they need to be issuing stickers, because very soon, if you don't have a sticker, you're not going to be in there. Very simple.
As long as we're on the transfer station issue, I appreciate your comments and recognizing the complexities and the different fingers of this. But I asked a couple weeks ago about the, really the savings projected, assuming we in-source the transfer to Willamantic as opposed to current outsourcing? And if that's still.
I mean, forgive me, I didn't catch all of that.
Oh, okay. And I, I asked a couple meetings ago about the, really the financial analysis of any savings associated with in-sourcing the transfer of waste to Willamantic as opposed to the current outsourcing? And I, I still would be interested in seeing that analysis.
That analysis. I, I have the numbers that were presented to us here. Beth would have the analysis, and perhaps Tom would have the analysis.
Hey, comment. I wrote it, so.
I don't have that analysis.
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to just take a look at it, what's included, and. I don't have the detail on it, I use Beth's numbers. It had to do with the Willamantic charges approximately $10 per ton to, to go and transfer. Okay, so they, and they pick up all the, all of the dumpsters, whether that be the MSW, the municipal solid waste, whether that be the recyclables, or whether it be the bunkers. Okay, and then they bring it to their facility and so forth. So this deals exclusively with, so she keeps numbers on how much they pay Willamantic for the approximately 600 trips per year that, that they do. Okay, it came out to $108,000. But during the analysis, I used that number, and during it, I said that this does not include, that it does not include the maintenance on the vehicle, it doesn't include the fuel in the vehicle, and all that. Based upon that, the finance department, the finance committee decided, of course, Beth requested it, it wasn't me that requested it, they requested that, that they purchased the unit outright, so that they'd be able, rather than leasing the unit, because it's handled differently from, from an accounting standpoint. So they would be able to bring all that down. With regard to the manpower thing, they felt that they had some excess capacity, and that they had people on staff that would be able to go and, and drive the vehicle, because they had the correct licenses to go and do that. So that, that's pretty much how I did it. All those numbers are available from the Department of Public Works. Do you know how many of the savings was? $108,000. Less, less what I just mentioned. It would be less, how much did the fuel cost for the year, how much was the maintenance cost for the year, and so forth. So I think that they used for their number somewhere in the 60s, if I'm not mistaken, but that was a finance decision online. In my report, which is public, you can go onto the website, you can see that I claimed that it was about $108,000. That was just, it's a hard number, it was the number of, the number of, of tonnage times $10 a ton, which is what they would get in charge. So I did see, in the numbers, I, I thought I saw some, some.
Bob, this, you're supposed to be addressing us, not discussing amongst the citizens here.
So.
This is.
I used all Beth's numbers.
Okay, if you want to talk about that later, you know, go right ahead.
Within the analysis, is there an assessment of, of the cost of liability we're assuming?
I, I didn't do that assessment, so I can't tell you. I can't, I, all I can offer you is the numbers that were given to me. I assume they're.
Can I get the number?
That's in his report. It's a part of his report, which is available, that's online, is it, Linda? So that's, that's generally available.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. As, it's worth noting that as this is underway, we are in union negotiations with the 1030 who represents them, and certainly there may be some impact from the outcome of that.
Oh, I understand.
And that's unpredictable, and I really can't talk about any of it.
I understand.
But.
Lucky you.
They're nice guys, all of them. Anyway, any other comments, public? Okay, moving on, unfinished business. Horizontal courage, safety. Didn't touch on that briefly, and I really don't have a whole lot going on. We're watching what's happened. We've had no response to any of the signs we moved or anything, and we may, we may be making more adjustments as people contact us and are concerned about it, and we'll see what happens, see where it goes. This is not public comment anymore. You'll have a chance in a little bit.
We see that.
That's kind of where we stand with that right now. Okay, and then revitalization committee. Sue wanted a update from them on each of our agendas. They meet again June 27th, they haven't met since the last second meeting. And we do have your email, Rob. Try and understand that a little bit, if you want to comment on it.
Sure.
Prior to the last meeting, or shortly, very shortly before the last meeting, I contacted Commissioner Redeker requesting that they have a representative from their, his staff, that's DOT Commissioner Redeker. And asked him if he would have somebody attend the meeting, give an update on the bridge, any long or short range plans for replacement, relocation, and discussion about sightlines and whatever else that they would like to have input on concerning the approach on the east end of the bridge. And he said he would have someone attend the next meeting. I did a follow-up after getting some information from Bill Garrish, the chairman of the revitalization committee. And I sent the commissioner an email again, acquiring or requesting who would, who would be attending, give them whatever information, some general subjects that would be discussed, and directions to this facility. So that's about it. I mean, I, that's my knowledge. I haven't checked my email yet, just till, well, there was no response back from him today, but he's probably been playing with trains right now, so.
Now, if I could ask one favor of you.
Yeah?
Because you sent this directly to me.
Yes, I understand, that goes, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm aware of it, and it was just a glitch in how they get, the email processed it. So I'll make sure it goes to admin.
I don't exist as far as emails are concerned.
Gotcha, yeah, understood.
And that's simply to protect the town.
Yep.
And ensure that when someone needs a copy, it's available.
Yep, understood.
Next item is transfer station committee final report discussion, but we seem to have done a pretty good job of that already.
I do have a couple of questions on it. Can commercial haulers, and I don't know where this is found, or where, who controls it, but can they start hauling directly right now, for example? Could they haul to Essex right now? Do they have to haul here?
No, I believe they have the option of taking wherever they would like. And they would, they would choose wherever they got the best deal, or the closest haul. And I believe that James, when he was, we were talking with him, indicated as much. They would select where they were gonna go with it, they have that option. We have a contract for all of our waste.
Correct, I understand that. But I just, I, I don't know if that, I, the scuttlebutt is that they would just assume it start, or at least Jansky's would be willing to start hauling to Essex or wherever on their own right now, which would immediately have an impact on our waste. So it might be worth reaching out and finding out if, first of all.
Yeah.
If it's possible, I mean, I don't know why it wouldn't be, but, and secondly.
I can assure you it is possible.
Okay, then, then, almost immediately.
I mean, Essex would have to accept them, be willing to take them.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm saying, I'm not sure.
They have to work up their own deal.
The machinations of who goes where, and how, or what has to happen, or what contracts have to be signed, or whatever, but, okay. And I understand you're working on the road design. Do commercial haulers there haul on Saturdays? I didn't think so.
I don't know, I'm not, I don't think so. Where that they do.
Because one thing you could do on Saturdays, the big problem is trucks backing right up to the big back hopper, the pickup trucks, and then having potentially falling in.
And it's quite.
And which is a legitimate concern. So, but if you put wheels stopped, so on Saturdays, when the commercial haulers wouldn't be coming in.
Oh, there's, there's a stop there already.
No, but put it out far enough so that a truck cannot back all the way up, and they have to get on the ground to unload. It would give you another options. Because the back gate is the same height as the front gate. So, just a thought.
It's a thought. I, hopefully, it's gonna be a moot point soon enough. If, if all these things come together, the reduction in the amount of material going in there will be enough so that it won't be a problem. And that's the ultimate goal.
I understand that, but I mean, you were, you were talking about earlier about a situation where you have excessive vehicles, and that typically would be occurring on a Saturday. And it's just a thought I had.
Yeah, I believe the last time when we did that initially, was during the week. And I was in the office when I was receiving the calls from there, about things were just absolutely hammered. And they just couldn't get ahead of it, it was just playing hell with them.
Just a thought.
As I say, I was here when that happened. I did include, for what it's worth, in the packet, you'll see West Hartford officials, and they have initiated the bag program. And it's gonna be for the haulers and everyone. The whole, everything is coming there, be it by hauler, and I believe they have a uniform, universal pickup in West Hartford. So if you put it on one of the trucks, one of the hauling trucks, it's gotta be in a bag. And if you bring it yourself, it has to be in a bag. It's an interesting article, I think it's a wave of the future. The areas to dispose of material are shrinking fast. Costs are tolerating, they're going through the roof overnight. And we have a major budding problem. I would be inclined to think that the state is gonna ultimately have to do something on a statewide basis, and address this, how do we deal with the trash? And the sheer volume of litter and trash that you get when you buy anything is mind-boggling. I, I can't quite understand, almost as often as not more than the item you purchased. We superwrap everything and package it to the nth degree, and I wonder why we have all this trash.
So I have one other question. So have you, you said you've talked to town clerk about getting the necessary.
I've held off because of the dog licensing menagerie that's going on. Everybody's coming in, licensing the dogs, doing a dozen things all at once. And she had indicated earlier that it was a real tough month in June. It's now gotten down close to the end of the month, and I said, you know, went and bothered her for a few minutes, and said, you know, tell me about how it impacts you, what you wanna do, can you handle these stickers that have some sort of icon on it, that the sensor can identify? How does it all work for you?
Well, we may not, I mean, the gate system would need that, but you might just have a visual recognition, and making sure people have a.
Visual recognition means that somebody has to position themselves, and we could do it. But they're gonna, somebody's gonna have to be there all the time. And that's a body, and the cost of a person. You know, and whatever that amounts to for the course of a year. And it's another full-paid person. And very quickly, we can start adding people here, there, and everywhere, and make the system work. But it's gonna be very expensive. And, you know, we're the savings when you start doing that. Goal is to use the system we've got and recognize savings in the process. So, I mean, that's one of the things that you keep back and forth. Yeah, I can do that, but I can, I can have someone staff the waste station all day. And, but it's gonna cost us. And it costs us his work, his time, doing other things. And so you, in the end, you almost have to go back. And we did have four people up there one time, and two or three part-timers. But if we have to go back to that system, there's not much savings left for us. That's, it's.
Okay.
They keep squeezing the balloon and keep popping out in other places.
Could I ask a question of Mr. Gelson? Did you, did they put your license plate on your sticker when they put it on your truck?
No, we don't do that right now.
Not doing that?
But these stickers are on the inside of the windshield.
Correct.
There, you destroy them when you take them off. You're not gonna swap it from.
Well, no, I understand that, I understand that, but it's, it's one thing if they, if the, if they install them on a vehicle, because then it would, obviously, they, they know. But they shouldn't probably be giving them out to people, to put on.
My knowledge, they install them.
Okay.
And that's always been the case.
I think they just, you know, they may need a reminder, but it's just, just a thought, okay.
Got it. Okay. And we've kind of touched on the citation hearing procedure. That is in the lawyer's hands right now. And we looked at what Durham and what Middlefield are doing, very similar to what we have. And it's interesting, the one that Randy created really follows the state guidelines, almost line for line. And looking at Middlefield's and comparing them, you suddenly say, oh yeah, this existed before. And you can see where they adapted it, where they rearranged it, to start to conform to what the state has. And they've got little variances in it that I look at and I go, hmm, I wonder about that. The one from Durham is much closer. And one of the things I'm finding is that typically, they seem to wind up with a hearing officer knowledgeable in the arena that they're working with. If it's the building department issuing citations, they've got somebody who knows building, understands what's going on. If they've got someone, you know, with animal control, they've got someone who understands animals, and what that's all about. And neither say not someone who has any authority, or has the ability to issue a citation. Has to be someone who's completely neutral. Curiously enough, talking to Mansfield, their animal control officer had very little knowledge of it, and had never issued a ticket, never been involved with it. And when I talked to the town clerk, he said, oh, well, you know, this is University of Connecticut. And what we're dealing with is parties, and illegal drinking, and underage drinking. And that's the biggie for us, that's where we use the whole process. So you get a little insight, they are out there. Our lawyer looked at it, said iffy about whether or not you generate enough money to pay for the process, you know, in the long run. And these are various other towns that he's been involved with. So he said, you know, it's, depends on how it's supplied, and how it's used, and just what you're involved with it, so.
So, so did Mansfield establish an infraction for underage drinking?
They, illegal partying, and illegal possession of alcohol, and that sort of thing. And you've got a copy of their citation in the, somewhere along the way here. And they have a lot of things that we, I look, no, that's nothing to us.
Well, it might be.
It might be.
I mean, in the state parks, they have infractions for those same types of things. Otherwise, it's interestingly that the state police would have to arrest someone for underage drinking, so.
And we, we gave our police a number of years ago permission to go onto private property if they felt a party was underway with kids, illegal drinking. So we, we do deal with that at a higher level. You know, the animal ordinance, which still needs a little bit of work. Trailer ordinance is essentially ready to go. The lawyer suggested that as our regulations, our ordinances are ready, we can put them in place, no reason not to. And indeed, we might have done that tonight with the trailer ordinance, but I really wish for the sue be here to do that, if we're gonna seriously look at one of them. Perhaps next time, we'll, we'll approach one or two of those, and put them on the books. And he says, then you come back and you just modify them, when you have the ordinance in place. What else we got? The crisis strategic communications plan. Sue is in the process of creating a charge, and she's taken pretty much over that, and that organized. I expect we'll hear from her on the next meeting. The NEA, Neighborhood Assistance Act. We had the meeting, I think what day that was?
Thirteenth.
What was it?
Year thirteen.
The thirteenth. And we actually had an attendance, I've been doing it for years, I'd never had an attendance before. We had three applications. The theater's always there, the town is always there, and the Connecticut. What did I call it?
Landmark.
There's the landmarks. There we go, was there. A lot of, there's a lot of confusion about that. People didn't understand that all we are is just handling the paperwork. This is a state program, and the state requires that the town implement it, or do the paperwork for them. What it does is it gives organizations like the theater or Connecticut landmarks the ability to go out and solicit donations. And those who donate are allowed to take a one-hundred percent write-off on their taxes. And typically, they're corporations, ever-source, major operations like that, that are looking for a tax write-off. The state sets a limit, I think it's five million dollars. And if applications in excess of that come in, then they prorate everybody down in terms of how much they can write out, write off. It's basically the state giving businesses the ability to donate to their special cause. We go for twenty thousand every year. Every once in a while, somebody actually makes a donation. I think a thousand dollars one year, and I don't remember where that came from.
Connecticut.
Connecticut gave it to us. The theater, I get something, I believe, out of that every year. And they do use it for one project or another that's considered special. Connecticut landmarks is looking for sixty-five thousand dollars in donations. And that's gonna be earmarked for that barn as part of the five-hundred thousand dollars they need. So they have to state how much they want, there are limits in terms of how much you can look for, there are limits in terms of how much anybody can. It's a nice little program. We do not contribute anything to it, other than a little bit of time and a little bit of paperwork. That'll be coming back at the next meeting, I imagine, or somewhere thereafter, for approval.
This meeting.
Oh, we?
You need to do it this meeting.
I thought it was after the fact. Okay.
You need to approve to send them to the state at this meeting, by statute.
My apologies.
The approval has to go to the state by July first.
On the front end, I thought we approved after they gave them the money.
No.
Okay, with that explanation, then, there we go, you're right, a motion. I will make a motion to approve and forward to the state for their approval, three projects requesting funding by the Neighborhood Assistance Act for 2018. I get a second?
I will second that if we're voting on them individually.
Okay. And all in favor?
Aye. Well, for the motion, we're not all in favor of.
I'm sorry?
You have a second, and we need discussion.
Yeah, we need the discussion, there you go. What would you like?
I have a real problem with our friends at Connecticut landmarks. At the hearing, and at their, I think, what they call it, a community conversation, which, as you said, virtually no one in the community was aware of. Their explanation as to what they're doing, and how they're putting stuff together here, made me really question their fiduciary, and we'll bring that word up again, responsibility to their members. They didn't put out a five-hundred thousand dollar job to bid. They, at the hearing, I questioned who was doing their architectural and engineering work. And if I understood Ms. Hack correctly, she stated that Patrick Pennell was gonna be doing the work, if I understood her correctly.
Yes.
And he's a member of their board. And so I also asked about the energy efficiency doors and windows, because that was stated, that would be second phase. And I questioned whether it would be two years, they'd be able to complete it in two years. And they said, well, that would be the second phase. And that actually was discussed at the community conversation. And the first phase was enclosing the building. Well, it's hard to enclose a building if you don't put any windows and doors in it. So. So, I have some real issues with this. And I personally do not believe the town should be endorsing this project in any way, shape, or form. There's so many questions about this project and their management of this property that I will say I will be voting no on this.
Okay. I don't believe there's any way we can separate the three. And is there? To approve two and not the other?
Why not?
Okay. Then let me modify the motion.
But somebody's gotta tell them that they're not getting set for it.
And I will modify the motion and withdraw my, my motion as it stands now. And to approve and forward to the state for approval, the two projects being the Opera House and the town. And can I get a second on that motion?
Can I suggest this friendly amendment to vote on each one individually? And then that clarifies the issue for everyone.
Okay. Probably a better way to do it. I'll make a motion to approve the Goodspeed Opera House's application to the EAA for their project funded by the Neighborhood Assistance Act for 2018. I get a second?
You have a second?
Okay, all in favor? Discussion?
I'll throw the discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will make a motion to approve and forward to the state for their approval, the Town of East Haddam's application under the Neighborhood Assistance Act for 2018.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I will make a motion to approve and forward to the state of Connecticut funding, under the Neighborhood Assistance Act for the Landmark Association and their barn. I get a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. And any discussion? And you've already made your point?
I'll be voting nay.
All in favor? And I think you've persuaded me as well, so we'll say no to them both. See what happens. Town of East Haddam. What we're looking to do is to amend the East Haddam Code of Ordinances to establish the municipal office. This building is a polling place for all elections henceforth. And the way it works, the state requires that if you have a polling place, the election has to be held in the same place. And we're doing this to be timely for the polling that's gonna be taking place in another, what, month, month and a half now?
August, August 14th.
There you go.
Is the primary.
So, what I'm doing is gonna make a motion to amend the East Haddam Code of Ordinances, Chapter 26, Elections, Article 4, Location, 26-4, to establish the Municipal Office Complex Gymnasium at One Plains Road as a polling place for all elections held subsequent to the approval at the town meeting. And hereby repeals any prior ordinance resolution establishing a different location. A second?
I'll second that.
And discussion on that?
Nope.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then moving forward again, the electors and citizens of Town of East Haddam are warned that we have a town meeting coming. And I'm... Let's see if I can read that. Electors and citizens of Town of East Haddam, Connecticut, qualified to vote in town meeting are hereby warned and notified that a special town meeting will be held in the Town Hall on Town Street in the said town of East Haddam at 8:00 PM on Tuesday, July 10th, 2018, for the following purposes to wit. Item one, to consider an act upon the following resolution recommended by the Board of Selectmen to amend the East Haddam Code of Ordinance. I'm sorry, I got the other one.
You're correct.
Code of Ordinance, Chapter 26, Elections, Article 4, Location, 26-Four, resolves the town meeting, hereby establish the Municipal Office Complex Gymnasium at One Plain Roads Mudus as a polling place for all elections held subsequent to this date, and hereby repeals any prior ordinance or resolution establishing a different location. And I think that's what we just voted on.
No. Yes and no. You, you have to, you have to vote on the resolution first. The resolution puts the item on the call for town meeting, and then you approve the call for town meeting.
Pardon me. It gets too complicated sometimes. Can I get a second on that?
Second.
And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sure, read the same thing a second time.
Yep.
As I said, I need glasses. I mean, very clear. Volunteer of the Month. And I'd like to read a letter. To Board of Selectmen, I am pleased to nominate Theodore Lambert as our June 2018 Volunteer of the Month. I've known Ted for many years and have always been impressed by the energy and time that he's been willing to contribute to many local projects which he has been part of. He's been varied in scope and orientation, but all have seen his wholehearted attention and support when needed. Most recently, I witnessed his efforts in supporting the Wall of Honor, now on display in our recently dedicated new municipal office building. He, along with Forrest Anderson, Volunteer of the Month, July 1994, developed the concept for the display, raised the funds, enlisted the needed support, and oversaw the creation and installation of a very special memorial. This striking display has become a welcome stop for visitors to our facility. It shows an ever-changing presentation, including members of our community who have served America as part of our armed forces. Display is regularly updated and enlarged, making it an essential stop whenever you are visiting. Not one to rest on his successes, Ted is already moving forward, seeking new ways to serve and improve our beautiful town. Ted has been and continues to be an inspiration and a friend to us all. And I wanna make a motion. It's signed by, the way, by myself. I wanna make a motion to name Theodore Lambert as Volunteer of the Month for June 2018. I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I have a note here from Lisa Conroy. "Dear Linda, by consensus, the Recreation Commission recommends Margie Roberts to be appointed, reappointed for a three-year term. Chairman Walter Parkes and Mary Colpays will not be returning. We thank them for the years of service and dedication to the Recreation Commission. Sincerely, Lisa Conroy." And I'm gonna make a motion to reappoint Margie Roberts as a regular member for a three-year term to expire July 1st, 2021, on the Recreation Commission. Get a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
None.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And it should be noted that Walter Parkes and Mary Colpays do not wish to renew their terms on the Recreation Commission. There are three vacancies with those two added, and there are three potential new members that Lisa will be submitting later.
What was on for like 30 years too?
Like 30 years. I mean, almost forever. And moving on to tax refunds, I'm gonna make a motion to award tax refunds in the amounts as presented, $74.34 to Toyota Lease Trust, $76.93 to Vault Trust. I get a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion?
None.
And all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Once again, public comment. Yes, sir.
I just wanna thank you for coming out and seeing the disaster of our wonderful signs here in the light. Unfortunately, you and I were up there discussing this. I signed to the back of a couple of those signs that were moved. They didn't get moved wherever they were. The ones up further up the hill or up behind the trees, those were moved. Just collect it from up at night and try to get in my driveway, Glenn's driveway next door. Reflection of those signs is just ruined. Cannot find the damn driveway. This is in the summer.
Even with the, even with the moving that we did. And we pulled a couple of signs and we moved.
Yeah, exactly. It's not working, okay? In the summertime, at night, you can't find those driveways reflection coming off the side.
Okay, I'll be up there and take a look at it.
Let's go a little further, okay?
Yeah?
That's now. In the winter time, there's no leaves in the tree. I don't like getting up at 5:00 in the morning. He does, because they get up at 5:00. But the lights come in the house like you wouldn't believe.
Reflected.
You're gonna come back and say, thank you for your concern in doing something. Come back and, I think those signs are, they're a waste of money and a waste of time. Besides, I like to come here every month just to pick on you.
I'll come down and take a look at it.
It's just, it's a waste. We're gonna read you address this anyway, we discussed this in the past.
Yeah.
I just have one thing to say about that. It was initially said when they came out and revoked two of those signs, that they were gonna, the ones that Ron signed with you, those were the ones that were gonna be moved in the middle of June. So, we're at June 20th and we were just wondering, where do we stand? How close are we to seeing public works out there removing the signs that were gonna be removed?
Let me come back and revisit that. And...
You can make it easy to sell us to remove them. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
I, you know, once we change governors, I, I think we can be a lot more flexible. I need to be judicious at the moment.
But I really don't understand it. I just don't understand it. Thirty, forty years there, we've never had accidents. Beginning of the hill, beginning of the curve, we have narrows, just point to go around the curve coming up. Coming up the hill, it's the same thing. It's not always something, because somebody gave the town some money, gave us a grant, they had some study, come up to a study. You know, it's a waste of time and a waste of money. But I like to come here every month to talk to you.
Forty years, thanks for a small purpose overkill. As Brian said, we've never had a problem out there ever in 40 years.
No, I take that back with every one.
A chipmunk.
The gentleman was drunk as a dawn air and forgot where he was.
And he might have gone and missed the signs anyway.
Excuse me?
He wouldn't have missed those signs either.
No.
Not in pretty old days.
Yeah.
Mr. Rose, did you want Mr. Lyman to come out when you're lying in bed so you can see the reflections on?
Let's get it done before the winter sets in.
It would just be nice to come home and find your driveway. Honestly, come on up at nighttime, try to come into Ron's driveway, Rose's, and our driveway's the next, the one right out here. You cannot find your driveway. You literally have to stop and, and look for it.
It's a glade, we're not that. This is a path coming down, don't forget.
I've always visited during the day. I've gotta come up at night, I can see that.
We go at night, please.
When it's dark, not when it's this.
You know, it's, it gets dark. It's gonna be getting dark earlier and earlier now.
My dog won't bite you, I promise you.
So, we're pretty well established to say that these signs aren't coming down in the middle of June?
I don't know. I'm not sure what Steve's got planned, but I'll talk to him about it.
No, we can't touch them. We won't touch them, but we're trying to, trying to get this done right, but it's just...
Okay, thank you.
See you tomorrow.
That's what I said. Just don't drive them back to us.
Emma, the, the movement of pulling to the MOB, I guess I understood it would be in the gym?
Yeah.
Is that fully handicapped accessible?
We've got the elevator up to it, yes.
Do I get a...
There is an elevator and it does work. Not, yeah, an elevator and it works. And...
And the ramp coming down from the main entrance?
And the ramp comes down for it, yes.
Okay.
It is fully, fully handicapped accessible. And we also have a tarpaulin cloth, I don't know what you wanna call it, that covers the entire gym to protect it. One of the concerns was having that much traffic on it was gonna do damage to the floor. So, we've also compensated for that.
They do that at the schools?
Yeah, they do it at the school as well. Back when we were voting there. Any other?
Since you're not requesting the funding from NEA with a barn, is there a different option that the town might consider to just get a different barn? That would be a lot less than $100,000.
It's not our barn. They're not spending any money on it.
We never were spending any money on it.
Oh, all right.
It's not ours.
I don't know anything about the barn thing.
This is to give them...
I just spent $5,000 for a barn and I was...
This is to give them permission...
I mean, 14, he said that was small, you know?
This gives them permission to go out and solicit money, corporate money elsewhere, not from us. And we simply are doing a little bit of paperwork for them.
Okay, all right.
There you go.
Anything else? I can give you more information on that.
Rob, any?
Nothing.
A motion to adjourn?
So, move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.